7:01, we call a meeting to order. Mr. Troxell, would you please listen and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wertz is absent, all other board members are present. Mr. Board has public notice been given.
It has, we are working off the revised agenda as we had several agenda items that were added with a quick turnaround in a week's time.
Public comment, per policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or enrolled district student. Person wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Steele, did you get any?
No.
Good work, thank you. On to reports, Student Council report.
So Student Council has asked that they be put on a future board meeting due to a co-curricular activity going on tonight. We're unable to attend.
Thank you. IMCE presentation.
So at the last board meeting, the board acted on a five-year library plan. This board meeting has a presentation from Mr. Detman going through that plan. The link is in Board Docs. Did board members have any questions? Mr. Detman is present, available, and available to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board? To the District Administrators' report.
Okay, so again, due to the quick turnaround between board meetings, having one last week and then again this week, there not only were revisions to the agenda that happened late last week, but also some additional information that was added after the board meeting was published in Board Docs. So if you didn't get a chance to check over the weekend or even as early as today, there may be some additional information that we're referring to that you may not have seen. But it is all in Board Docs now. We'll try to point those things out. Just the board knows about that. And then some committees coming up on Thursday, the 18th. There's a policy committee that will start at 6:00 PM, followed by curriculum at 7:15. Thursday, the 18th is also the day that CISA III is hosting their new board member orientation at 7:00 PM at CISA III in Fenimore. I know we have one new board member, but I also know that it's possible that when the present board members were elected, maybe they didn't get the opportunity to attend or there was a conflict or maybe they just like to go again and letting the board know that that option is available to everyone if you would like to see what that's about. Next Monday, the 22nd of April, at 7:00 PM is our reorganizational meeting where we will square in the elected board members from this past election as well as officer elections and some other positions on the board. And then with that, while all the board members have declared their intent on what they want to run for an officer if they do want to do that, of course nominations will be taken on the 22nd as well. But your committee interest, Mrs. Steele has handed out slips for committee interest. Please get those turned in if you have not already so that we can hand those over to whoever's elected the president at the next board meeting and he or she can assign committees accordingly. And then finally, just an acknowledgement, we do have a new board member coming in and with that means that we are parting ways with a board member. She is absent here tonight, but it still should be said that we thank Mrs. Wertz for her four years of service on the board and her dedication to the Richland School District and making us a better district with her on the board and her leadership and her expertise. So thank you to Mrs. Wertz for all that she's done for our school district before she was on the board but certainly while she was on the board. And that is it. Any questions, comments from the board?
All right, board member reports. Buildings Property and Transportation met just before this meeting. We began at 6:30. We had three topics. The first, we opened a singular bid on the third vehicle for STING that is grant-funded. That'll be on action items 10A. The second topic was the disposal of property with Chromebooks. That's going to be on the consent agenda and it will allow students, I believe it was K through 12, or third through 12. They would have the opportunity to purchase back the Chromebook that they used this year at a $10 rate. And so I assume speak to your teachers, counselors, et cetera, for more info. And then the last item was disposal of property, anything that carries monetary value of, I believe it's $500 or more. Now this gets compiled by Mr. Jones and then comes to our committee to allow it to go up on Wisconsin surplus auctions. That was more so informational. And that was it.
The personnel committee meets this evening with the RCEA or seller negotiations and that'll be brought to the board at a later date.
Yeah, I just have to thank Melissa too on behalf of the board. It's been a pleasure serving with her. It's gonna hurt losing her experience and expertise and some of her guidance, so. But do truly thank her for her time and guidance the last couple of years that I've been learning how a board works. So I wish you the best. All right. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of April 8, 2024?
Some more.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dowdner, discussion. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Financial items, approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated April 10, 2024.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxell. Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to add?
I'll make my.
Thank you. Discussion? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 Approval of invoices.
I move we approve community first bank general checking accounts checks number 86222 through 86260, ACH number 232401292 through 232401312, and EFP for a net total of, no, EFP for a net total of $138,836.46. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion is made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded in Mr. Huntimer. Mr. Bosworth, anything you would like to add?
Nothing, aye.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mrs. Steele, consent agenda items.
Okay, so we have the, except for the donation towards the champion games, valued at approximately $1,000 from Shriver Foods per policy 7230, except the WRCCS stipend in the amount of $10,000 to be used to support the work and growth of the Charter Schools Governance Board, except the sale of the Chromebooks as recommended by the Building Property and Transportation Committee with the proceeds used to be purchased for future technology supplies, and waive policy 5851 and allow the National Honor Society to return to their trip past 7:00 PM, and approve the budget revision for 2324 fiscal year as presented in accordance with the provisions of the Wisconsin statute 6595A. This shall require at least a two-thirds majority vote. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion? Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank Shriver Foods for their generous donation. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
Some more.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded in Ms. Troxell, discussion. Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 All right. On to information and discussion items, district vacancies and appointments.
Okay, so you'll see on the chart there, the top chart, our positions that we have open. We have a couple that are in the interviewing process right now, a 4K DC aide we're interviewing right now as well as an art teacher at the primary school, primarily at the primary school. We have a handful of positions that are open. An IT custodian has been open and continues to be open as we look for qualified applicants. 4K, 5K, a math teacher at the high school, another 4K teacher, and then we have a vacancy, our marketing communications director. That posting ends on April 21st. We didn't know the exact posting date at the time the board was public. Board book was published, but it is the 21st of April. And then the bottom table shows certified, admitted and exempt as well as support staff and co-curricular positions that have been approved or filled since the last board meeting. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
On to action items. The STING vehicle bids.
So as Chairman Huntimer of the Buildings Property and Transportation Committee alluded to earlier in his report on tonight's Buildings and Property Committee, there was the STING vehicle bid. The STING program had originally planned on purchasing three vehicles. We were only able to get two earlier in the fiscal year, but we did decide to see if there's an opportunity to get a third one here before this fiscal year runs out. Turn it over to the Buildings and Property Chair for an update on what the Buildings and Property Committee did talk about and what they received for bids. Mr. Huntimer?
We received one, which was the same amount that we received when we got the first two vehicles. That was from Joan Chevrolet here in town. We were given two different quotes. One was for a 2024 Chevy Traverse, which is an eight-passenger all-wheel-drive four-door. The second was for a 2024 Chevy Suburban, also a four-wheel-drive four-door, also eight-passenger. In the end, it was a unanimous decision that while we may see the benefits of having the size vehicle that a Suburban offers, the cost difference per month was $763 and considering that it is grant-funded, it seemed like the fiscal conservative and responsible thing to do to go with the Traverse's or unanimous recommendation.
So with that, we would be looking for a motion to accept the bid on behalf of the, or excuse me, at the recommendation of the Buildings Property and Transportation Committee to accept the bid from Joneses for the 2024 Traverse. If I understood that correctly?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
So motion by Mr. Huntimer, seconded by Ms. Troxell to accept the CCLC vehicle bids as recommended by the Buildings Property and Transportation Committee. Any further discussion or questions?
What will be the expected delivery date of that vehicle?
I believe the spec said before June 30th. But I don't know if they have a more specific?
Sure. And there were quite a few questions that they had to fill in, 39 of them in total. And I am not seeing a specific date on their sheet here.
Reason for the question is just because they were unable to provide that third vehicle the first go-around?
Right. Yes, but now they can. They also did not have Suburbs as an option the first go-around. And to Mr. Board's point, the earliest possible date that it can be made not to surpass June 30th of 2024. Failure to deliver by June 30th, 2024 may result in a cancellation of the purchase. Being that they had them, you know, in hand and delivered, I would assume that it's just a matter of installing backup alarm, I think is one of the elements upon agreement. So I would imagine very soon.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. The MOU for counseling services with Richland County Health and Human Services.
So the board's aware that at a recent board meeting, we entered into an MOU for another two years with Paquette, the Paquette Center for psychological services and counseling for our students. We have been working with Richland County Health and Human Services to enter into a similar agreement with, is it Trailhead, Sean? Okay, through the county, but with Trailhead therapy. The MOU is nearly identical to Paquette, but due to some absences in staff, we just haven't been able to get the signed MOU back from Richland County Health and Human Services. So I'm asking that that be postponed until the May meeting so we have a signed MOU to act on.
All right, thank you. The resolution authorizing the redemption of the general obligation promissory notes dated October 22nd, 2014.
All right, so I will turn this over to Mr. Bosworth for a summary on what this is, but I will help him share the screen.
The graphic that you folks can see here is the same graphic that we shared a couple of months ago when we were looking at the overall debt of the school district. So just to kind of refresh, the stop bar here is the overall debt, everything combined. 1.26 million here. This was some unfunded liabilities for retirement that the district had to go into debt to a few years ago. The large orange bar is what remains of the 2016 referendum debt. And then the small box down here in the bottom, about $550,000, that's what remains from the EE loan which originated in 2014. This EE loan here, scheduled to be paid off next October. Because of the way taxes are levied and we levy for the calendar year, not necessarily fiscal year, the money to pay this off has already been levied and collected. So what we are suggesting tonight is that we pay this box up right here, this EE loan is $550,000. We pay that early and we would need to make a resolution, the language of which is in your board book. The advantages to this, one, it just, we have the money. It's here, it's collected. It's not going to cost us anymore to do it now. There is a slight advantage in paying it early in this fiscal year and that we may get aided more on that money next year. So that, in theory, would potentially decrease, we get more aid from the state, it would decrease the amount of money that we have to levy from our constituents. And then finally, I think maybe because we have some new debt coming on, just the idea of lifing this away so that we can focus on the new debt would be advantageous. This, we have talked this year about defeasance. This is not defeasance, this was already planned for. In about a month, you will see, at the next board meeting, you will see a similar resolution as it retains to this bar. And that's when the much larger payment will be made to reduce this debt. Tonight, we're not talking about that. We're talking about ending this EE energy efficiency loan for 2014 and just closing that out. Board, have you read anything or do you have any questions?
I think that was a good summary as far as I'm concerned. Board?
I know it's not prepaying like years in advance, but do we have an idea of what we would potentially save in interest despite paying this off sooner?
I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of the general obligation promissory notes dated October 22nd, 2014?
Some more.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded in Mr. Dowdner. Any other further discussion, questions? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 2024-25 staffing revisions.
Okay, so in February, February 12th to be exact, the board approved the staffing plans as it related to the teaching staff for the 24-25 school year. And at that time, the board actually approved two plans. I think you just have to hit "stop sharing", Mr. Bosworth? Or "sharing and then stop sharing"? There you go. So they actually approved two plans. One, if the referendum question one fails, and one plan if question one passes. Question one passed this past election and so the exact wording there that we had in the February 12th, 2024 board meeting is there in blue. Essentially says we'll maintain our 2324 staffing numbers, still going to reduce administration upper management by 1.0 FTE, but the exact positions of how to use those positions are still being examined by administration. So that's set, okay? And that's what was approved back in February. However, as we're continually evaluating the needs of the district, there were some things that came up that we have identified as either problematic or things that we need to take a look at. One, and again, these eight are listed here. I'll just state them for our audience. One, the part-time art position at the high school has been very problematic to fill, okay? We've had that posted essentially the entire year, have had to do it through overload. We just don't anticipate, you know, filling that position. It would take a very unique person to have that. Two, we had a resignation for world language teacher at the high school, 1.0 FTE. The course offerings and the number of students that that teacher in that position had was low and so as we're examining future world language needs, the need for a full-time second world language teacher is not justified. However, we really can't eliminate it all the way because world language must by state statutes be offered to seventh and eighth graders. Not that every seventh and eighth grader has to take it, but we do have to offer it. So we do need a little bit of a world language position. Three, in my conversations with community members, community leaders, as well as some local factories, we are anticipating a relatively high probability that our student population of ESL students, English as a second language, those Spanish-speaking students is going to grow next fall as our factories continue to look to hire and use the Visa programs that are available to them to bring in workers. So that's something we want to be proactive with. Fourth, our partner school, which has been off to a fantastic start here. We've got 13 students there. The plan has been for that to expand double, if not slightly more than double, next year. But in doing so, we really need an additional adult aide down there. Doesn't have to be a teacher. We have a teacher down there. But we do need an adult aide for supervisory and transportation roles. Right now, if one of those students needs to go somewhere, get dropped off at a partnership with one of our local constituents, the whole group has to go. And they just, you know, take them all. This would allow an aide to stay back and be supervisory or to have them be the one that transports them. And that will allow us to expand that school. The fifth thing is that the need for a translator in our district continues to grow. This is kind of coupled with we expect an increase in Spanish-speaking families and students into our school. And so translation needs is something we have to continue to address. Number six, the need for 1.2 FTE speech and language pathologist, we believe can be reduced down to approximately 0.4. So it's a 0.8 FTE reduction in speech pathology. Number seven, we really lack a good alternative education for students that have to be educated off-campus. There really is no good way to do that and we do have a handful of students that have to be educated in an off-campus setting. And then finally, one of the things that we've seen is that here at the high school, those teachers who are teaching the GED program, whenever we take a core teacher and have them teach or supervise the GED program, that's a class that they can't teach for the rest of our student population. And so the scheduling crunch has felt a little bit with those teachers. And some of them are not only GED teachers, but they're also coaching academic coaches and so it's compounded by the number of courses that they're able to actually offer to our students. And so with that, in summary, what we're proposing is that we reduce, they're on the left-hand side of that table, we reduce our staff by 2.8 and that would come with 1.2 in speech pathology, the 1.0 world language teacher and the 0.6 art position at the high school, reduced by 2.8 and increase a 0.4 speech pathologist, primarily here at the high school, a 0.75 or three-quarter position for an alternative education slash GED teacher. The idea is that this position would be someone who can help not only educate those handful of students that we have that need to be educated in an off-campus setting, but they could also fill the role, at least in some capacity, for our GED program, which would allow some of those core teachers to be used in our schedule. To take that world language position that we have and turn it into a 20%, approximately 20% world language teacher to be able to offer a world language to our seventh and eighth graders and the remaining part of their time would be, they would be a district translator, both verbally and ideally some written communication as well to minimize or help with that. well, to minimize the, or help with that, those phone calls home to families, health needs, those kinds of things that, that we have, translation issues. And then finally, that we add an elementary teacher that would teach ELA and math to our elementary students, and the unique thing about this particular position would be is that they would teach reading and math to students who are ESL students, and they would teach that, those core fundamentals, in their native language, okay? They would teach reading and math in Spanish, for instance, so that those students could get their foundational learning skills in their native language, to make sure that they have good reading and math skills, so that they can build on those skills in the future, and then they would still be immersed in general English classes, English-speaking classes, classes through their electives and their other, other areas. But this would allow us to have a bilingual teacher to teach these students, instead of having them learn their foundational skills in English, which is not necessarily a language that they're fluent in, it would allow us to teach those, those foundations in their native language. The idea is that they would have a better opportunity to learn and expand. So that's the ask, that we reduce, essentially that we add zero point three-five FTE, reducing two point eight, adding three point one-five, with those positions as identified, and increase our support staff by one person, or up to eight hours a day, I suppose it could be over two people, and that position would be used to fill the partner school. And I think I've already kind of addressed the, the benefits there, but I'm happy to answer any questions and make sure that the board fully understands what, what our ask is. I think this will be a good benefit for our district. Questions?
With the elementary bilingual ELA and math, what would the kind of expectation be of them to help support the other course along with that, with it being English when their primary language is in Spanish?
Yeah, so our ELL teachers right now, we have two of them in our district, they are, one, either doing a lot of translating already, and then two, they're, they end up teaching some of these skills in Spanish, okay, or their, their language, and their real job is to support these students in their other course forms. So this would allow, by having the translator, part-time translator, as well as someone teaching these core subjects in the native language, so it'd allow our ESL teachers to really get back to doing what they should be doing, which is exactly what you're asking. So this person wouldn't do it, but it would open up the opportunity for our ESL teachers to be, to be ELL.
And Mr. Board, the translator, would they just be basically housed at the high school, or would they be kind of a floor?
They would definitely be used district-wide, exactly where they would be housed, my initial guess would be that since they would be teaching a world language up here at the high school, this would probably be their home, that they would be at full disposal for any of the buildings to be, you know, used as needed, whether it's a phone call at home, or, or a health issue, or whatever.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Board, but the term elementary teacher being the bilingual, that would classify as K through six, am I right?
That is correct.
Good. Are there thoughts on where that particular teacher would be housed?
So the general idea is that this would not be grade-specific, but more three levels of ELA and three levels of math, and we would place the students where their skills are in those, within those levels. So they're essentially teaching six classes, but you may have a third, fourth grade combined in a math class, or you might have fifth and sixth graders combined in a reading class, based on their skills. So it wouldn't be grade-specific, it would be K through six, though.
Any other questions? Is your motion to approve the revision to the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five staffing plan as presented?
I'll make that.
Motion made by Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Any further discussion, questions? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 I'll make the move into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one C, D, F, and/or G, and of the Wisconsin statutes one eighteen point one-two-five, to consider employment, promotion, compensation of employees, discussing individual employee hiring, administrator evaluations, contracts, compensation, negotiation issues, and strategies related to collective bargaining, to deliberate and/or act upon any proposed resolution to employment matter or administration, and application of a district vendor contract, and to discuss individual student discipline and student open enrollment applications, and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey, discussion?
I will just add that that will stay in the IMC because we will reconvene in the open at the conclusion of close tonight.
Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Now that this portion of the meeting's over, I had a chance to speak with Mr. Board. As a new member, I will be going to CISA III. So if anybody would like to go, would like to ride with me, please let him know, and I'd be happy to ride along with somebody, or somebody ride along with me. So just an invitation, that's all I meant to say. Thank you.